Do we want to just do the delegations right now before we have the discussion?
Sure.
Is everybody good with that?
Sure.
Okay. First is Mr. Giles. I'd like to remind everybody that we, for delegations, we have, you have a five-minute limit on your delegation for each one.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent. Good evening, members of the board. I stand before you this evening as a private taxpaying citizen to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment to the Canola County Board of Education and the University of Charleston contract, which was signed in January of 2005 detailing the usage of Lady Field. Also, I stand before you as a private taxpaying citizen to express my continuing, complete, and unwavering opposition to the contract as a whole between the Canola County Board of Education and the University of Charleston, which was signed in January of 2005 detailing the usage of Lady Field. It has never been, ever been, that I thought I was the smartest person in the room whenever I appeared before this board, and never have I tried to present myself as the smartest person in the room whenever I appeared before this board. But in the brief time I have allotted, I believe that I can clearly explain my position on both the proposed amendment and the contract, the contract as a whole. Number one, on the amendment, the Center for Disease Control and Epidemiology, the American Medical Association, and American Psychological Association all have concluded that high school students need adequate amounts of rest in order to realize their force of potential mentally, psychologically, emotionally, socially, and physically. Beginning practice 15 minutes later further jeopardizes a Capital High School football player's opportunity to receive adequate rest at night. The original contract provides for Capital High School to take the field no later than 4:30 p.m. At most every other high school in the state, players arrive home, have taken a shower, had dinner, and are engaging in recreational activities of their choice before a Capital High School player begins their journey home. This has always been unfair and should not be aggravated by having the Capital High School football team begin practice at 4:45 p.m. Grown men can practice under the lights at 10 o'clock at night. Number two, on the contract as a whole, Capital High School was not invited to participate in the drafting of the Canola County Board of Education and the University of Charleston contract that details the usage of Lady Field that was signed in January of 2005. We knew nothing about this contractual agreement until a few days before it was signed. The head football coach at the time, the late Mr. Jack D. Woolvine, and I were invited to the signing ceremony, which was conducted at Lady Field, and both of us did attend that signing. With me tonight, I have a copy of the press release for the event that day and a copy of that contract that was signed that morning in January, which had been handed to me by Dr. Durin when I arrived at the field. This contract is said to take effect on January 1, 2005, and would run until December 31, 2054. Provision is made for the University of Charleston to be reimbursed by way of the only predetermined formula included in that contract if the board decided to terminate the contract before the expiration of 12 years. The contracts signed that morning had 17 conditions listed in it. Not even one of those conditions included in that contract benefits Capital High School. In fact, the entire contract places Capital High School in a highly disadvantageous position that no other high school in Canola County must overcome. Recently, I've been made aware of a contract between the board and UC, which has a signature date of May 17, 2005. This contract has 18 conditions established in it. This latter contract does not contain a stipulation regarding the expiration of 12 years. A second formula for the UC to be reimbursed should the board terminate the contract at any time has been added. For these and too many other reasons to enumerate at this time, I express my personal opposition to the proposed amendment to the contract between the Canola County Board of Education and the University of Charleston, which was signed in January of 2005, which stipulates conditions that detail the usage of Lady Field and to the entire contract as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Next, we have Mr. King.
Mr. May, may I ask you?
Yes. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm here to present a proposal that committee has put together regarding Capital High School athletic facilities, that we were asked to form a committee by Mr. Cavender and Mr. White to come up with a plan that we could propose to the board regarding athletic facility at Capital High School. Although I'm not sure whether I really need to do this because we've already been told that the cost would be $6 million for something like that and that it's, we're unable to, the board is unable to do that, but I'll give it to you anyway. Our objectives in this, in the facility are to convert the existing soccer field into a multi-sport facility that will accommodate our football, soccer, and lacrosse teams with the turf field. To repair, correct drainage issues, fill holes, and grade the lower soccer field and install turf or a hardy Bermuda grass on that field. Also, to install new lights, spectator stands to accommodate a home crowd of 5,000 people with additional stands on the opposite side for the visitors. And also, to construct a field house with handicap accessible restrooms, a field house with locker rooms for a home team and visiting team, concession stand, ticket booth that has handicap accessible restrooms. In addition, we're asking the board to grade and gravel or asphalt a section of the lower field on the Route 214 side of the road for parking. So that is the proposal for the athletic facility at Capital. I believe, if you don't have a copy of it yet, we'd be happy to provide copies to you.
I'll put it in the Friday pack or email.
Okay. Second, I'd like to express my opposition to the proposed lease amendment to, with the University of Charleston and...
Speak up, please.
I'd like to express my personal opposition to the lease amendment with UC and the Board of Education. As Mr. Giles mentioned, I'm trying to figure out who benefits from this lease other than the University of Charleston. Currently, Capital, Horseman, and Stonewall use Lady Field for their home football games. Capital and Horseman share it for practice. UC constructed a locker room for 100 players that's extremely nice when compared to the locker room that Horseman and Capital use. They've also constructed a skybox next to the press box that they use. And those two things are off limits to the public schools. So there's really no benefit at all that has been given to the public schools with this lease. UC pays no expenses except for the turf that is supposed to be installed every eight years, which is done 13 years after the original. And I'd also like to say, how many parents of UC football players pay property taxes in Canola County? I looked at their roster, and there's six players from the county that pay property taxes in Canola County. Every parent from Capital, Horseman, and Stonewall pays property taxes. So the parents at those three schools are funding a facility for a private institution to use at the detriment of the public schools. That's awful, in my opinion.
Mr. King here. Five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Carpenter.
It's my unfortunate pleasure to be the football coach at Capital High School. I think most of you recognize me from begging for your help at some point. And I guess I'm the troublemaker that brings all this upon you for my lining in the paper and those kind of things. But at the end of the day, we're here because our kids want a place to practice football. Matt and I, I tried to write this down, but I couldn't. I damn near cried when I read that. You know, we're, we're, we just want a place to practice, you know? You fix the money situation, that's bad. You know, I agree, there's some good things going on in Canola County, but there's some bad things, too. And I know everybody says 15 minutes, you know, whatever's been changed, you know? 15 minutes, since I'm the only adult that's hired by Canola County that's at that place after 4:30, it pains me that there wouldn't be a discussion without anybody talking to me anyway. I figured I would be the person to ask. I couldn't tell you how many times we've moved practice, given up practice. This year alone, we gave up nine practices in August. Missed nine practices. You're a football guy, you know that's a big deal. September, we had 50, or nine, nine more practices cut to less than 50 minutes and still had to go out and play. I told Mr. Bay the first week, "Don't put us on a bus. Don't send us to play. We're nowhere near ready." There's nothing more disheartening than have to put your team on a, on a bus knowing that you don't have them safe, your kid playing. It's not fair. It's not fair to put them on a bus and make them go play a football game when they're not in shape, when they haven't been taught the tackle right. And you've all told us you would help us. And it's, you know, I hope, I told you, I hope we weren't duped into playing politics. I was voting for the levy. I like my dental insurance more than I like coaching football. But, you know, all kids come first. I don't buy it, you know? Not what I've seen. It's not what I, it's not what I live. And, you know, I couldn't put more money, I couldn't put more into Capital football than I already do. It'd be impossible. You know, 15 minutes, like I say, there's never been, if the time's 4:30, there's never been once in my, in nine years I've been the head coach. And if you say we quit, that we start at 4:30, there hadn't been two days in nine years that we started at 4:30. 4:30 means they quit at 4:30, and then they talk to their team for 10, 12 minutes more. By the time you get going, it's closer to 5:00. So 4:45 will mean 5:00. We'll sit around and wait an hour and 15 minutes more than any other school just to start practice, on top of the other times we'll have to move or be canceled. UC's never moved. They've never budged a minute since I've been the head coach in nine years. I thought about, should I mean, is this the time you can ask me questions? Do you want to know what goes on there?
Go ahead.
I mean, you have a question?
You still have a minute forty-two.
Well, I mean, I...
What time's Capital High School?
3:40.
4:44.
Yeah, four minutes. So we're, like I said, in comparison to anybody else in the county, that practice time would be, you know, 45 minutes at least that we're, we start later than anybody else.
Can I say something?
Yeah, that's...
You know, I feel like, um...
He's basically waving his...
What?
Yeah, you can ask.
Okay. Um, I don't know, maybe it was seven years ago, and this was all brought to my attention when you were calling me. And I didn't understand why Capital didn't have a field, isn't that... And I remember sitting in Dr. Durin's office, I think you were there, and Mr. Giles. And I remember Dr. Durin said, "Mr. Giles, I will give you Lady Field. You can have Lady Field." Wait, wait. And Mr. Giles said, "No."
Excuse me, that was not in Dr. Durin's office, that was in a board meeting here.
No, 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 no.
It was most likely, no ma'am. It was in the board meeting.
But, I mean, he asked you, Mr. Giles, I mean, I understand these issues, I think they're, I don't like them.
Ms. Jordan. Ms. Jordan. Capital High School, or, no, or any other high school in Canola County could take on the responsibility of Lady Field. It's my understanding that over the last 20 years, the board has only appropriated funding for the director, or the manager, or the secretary, and a couple of custodians, and otherwise Lady Field has to be self-sufficient. The board doesn't even pay the utilities at, at Lady Field. And we at Capital High School could not take on that responsibility and not have someone add it on to run it for us. And in the original conversation, Mr. Radlin, who was the president, right here, offered to build a practice mud hole out at Lady Field where the team would have to dress in the physical educational locker rooms. And I flatly declined that offer. I said, "We don't want to accept any less of what we have, of what we have." It would be great for Capital to be able to, to own Lady Field, but that could not be possible without a tremendous amount of financial assistance from Canola County.
I mean, but when he offered it, of all people, I mean, I think you were very organized, you could have done it, and it just sort, to me, in my opinion, it shut everything down. I mean, Mr. Giles, you're a very organized person, and he offered it.
And I could not take an administrator from my administrative staff and put them in Lady Field.
You know what I remember?
No, I'm not trying to get out of it.
You know what I remember in that meeting?
I don't know, I mean, I remember that meeting.
I remember having so much faith in you because you came to Capital High School first, and you looked at me when I told you the time, and you said, and you said, "Oh my God." My same place, G W.
But again, I don't know what happened all this time, and we're back at it again, and so that's...
It's gotten worse.
...among clear, that's what I believe.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, come on up, Mr. Giles.
The reason for the original meeting was because our team, and Coach Woolvine was the coach, was going into the playoffs.
No, he was, I'm not very historic, because he called me.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that, but I'm, I'm just saying, the initial proposal to, to accept Lady Field was made during the time when we were entering the playoffs, and Lady Field's manager had scheduled the revamping of the running track, and we had to get an injunction so that the football team could play. And that's where that discussion began. And I realized, we could not take on the responsibility of operating, no high school would, unless you got staffing.
I don't know, could the athletic director do it? I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing things out.
I'm just a private citizen. It's my understanding that over the last 20 some odd years, there's not been a dime appropriated in the budget for the maintenance or upkeep of Lady Field.
Okay. Let's have...
Wait, and Ms. West is going to answer a question.
Actually, since I'm in treasure, we have always, the chair of the treasurer appropriated for Lady Field. The amount that we appropriate is approximately, not exactly, changes a little year to year, but approximately $200,000.
So that would be salaries, basically.
Part of that is salary, and part of it is also utilities.
Mr. Carter, I believe he needs to come up and talk as well.
Can we have an accounting of that money? Because we, Capital's been, sports taken 75 percent over 30 years.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, plus every dollar. I'd like to have an accounting of all that.
Dr. Durin said that you wanted to share some information, is that true?
He had talked about the start times when they were...
Okay.
I have a question before he gets started. Because, I mean, I hope at some point everyone eventually can be happy with these times. When this contract was originally done with UC, I think, was it their time coming then?
Yeah, that original contract, remember the board wanted that negotiations to take place? We did, and we brought it back to the board's office.
Okay. I mean, I just need to refresh on all this, because I know we've been through this.
It's been a while.
I know, yeah.
I was asked by Dr. Durin to keep a record of times...
Mr. Carter, would you get the microphone up? Thank you.
Can you hear me now, sir? Thank you. I was asked by Dr. Durin to keep a record of the times since 10:15, which I have. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, UC was practicing from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. So Horseman and Capital could go on the field at any time after they arrived at the stadium. There were two times that Capital and Horseman could not get on the field at a proper time because of UC cutting off the field at 4:48. They were on the 15th and 10:30. At most times, everybody did get off, on and off, within a five-minute period. I will agree that at 4:30, some of it is not being getting off. I will agree with Capital High School.
Excuse me?
They, they are getting off at 4:30, 4:36, right at 4:36.
Do you want to go through the dates you all listed?
Yes, sir, I can go through them if you'd like.
Yes, you should.
Or I can pass this out, I do have a copy.
No, you can say it.
Okay. On 10:15, UC was on at 3:00, they got off at 4:48. Capital got on at 5:00, got off at 5:30. The following day, 6:00 a.m., Capital got on at 4:50 to 6:30.
Who practices at 6:00 a.m.?
University of Charleston.
Every day, or how many days?
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So they don't come out in the evening those days, or they do?
They only come out, they, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they come out at 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and then they do not come back.
Okay.
That's, that's since October the 15th. That's not been true all year, it's sporadic. It's not, that hasn't been all year.
Are they going to keep that, or do you know, or...
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Are they going to keep that schedule?
They, they, they fluctuate, ma'am, week by week.
So they're at 10:17. UC came on at 2:30, got off at 4:30. What time Capital High got on?
Capital, 4:30 to 5:35. And the following day, 4:15 to 5:15. 10:22, they were, were down to, Capital at 10:23, they were at 4:35 to 6:00 p.m. And on 10:24, Capital was at 4:30 to 6:10. 10:25, 4:36 to 6:10. Were at 10:29, there was a JV game. On Mondays, they have JV games. 10:30, Capital was at 4:40, got off at 5:40. 10:31, Capital 4:40 to 6:30. Capital 4:33 to 6:00 p.m. 11:05, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. 11:06, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. On 11:09, 11:07, 4:28, 5:40. Capital 4:30 to 5:40. On 11:09, there was a playoff game started then. On 11:12, no one practiced. 11:13, 4:30 to 5:40. 11:14, 4:35 to 6:30. From 11:12, University of Charleston was finished their season. That's where we've fallen from that, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Do you want to ask questions since what time?
Sure.
Is that okay? I just have a question.
If you want to come up and speak, you can speak.
I don't, I don't really need to speak, I just have a question, very quickly. Is that okay?
Okay.
Those were really short practice times. I'm a coach, I coach soccer, and we have to do ours because we're all crammed on our fields. And I would think that a football team with that many members, how are you only practicing for an hour? And I just turned around and asked, I said, "Why in the world are you only practicing that long?" And he just smiled and said, "Ask the question." So I'm confused.
I am, too.
I mean, I thought it was short, too. I, well, my son played football.
I'm not trying to be...
That's what I'm saying, why would I show up wanting to practice if I'm going to hit the road early?
Do we have anybody from the University of Charleston here?
But, but wait a minute, coach, haven't they already practiced by the time, when you come out, right? So who's ending you early?
I, I've never left at 5:40. I've never quit, I mean, that would be, I, I did early in the year, I mean, but in October, is that what time you leave, or is, that's not me, we don't quit at 5:30. We just, oh, oh, can you just let, what time do you, I, I left practice early today, what time did you leave today?
Like around 6:00?
Yeah. They quit at 6:00 today, and that was because I had to stop and tell them I had to come here. Never once quit. The only time we quit at 5:40 was in the summer.
So nobody's making you get off early?
Huh?
Nobody's making you get off?
No, nobody's ever, no. But I, I've got a calendar on my phone for September, I mean, for September, if you'd like to hear those minutes.
Sure.
Would you really? Oh, great. In September, where I, the, four, four games, right, the, three UC games on Thursday night, right?
That is correct, sir.
So we had to be off by 5:00. So we got on at 4:30, we had to be off by 5:00. On those Wednesdays, and then the other, the fourth week of September, they scheduled two junior high games, right? So that means, four of four weeks in September, on Thursday, we had to be off in, in 30 minutes.
Mr. Carpenter, what time do you get to Lady Field with, with all of your kids?
The kids get there about, it's about 10 after 4:00.
About 10 after 4:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the time they get busted.
Do you have Blackboard talk with them every day?
Mm, whiteboard now, it's great span, yeah.
Okay, but my day was Blackboard. Okay.
And I know, I know what you're going to say, I know what you're going to say, there are things I can do with them, you know?
Do you show, do you show them films?
We win a lot of games, yeah, so I do all of that. Yeah, you know, we do all of it.
I've been there, done that, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we win a lot, so I do all that stuff.
And in the days they play games, you could probably get on earlier than normal, right?
The school's out later.
I can get out there 4:30, yeah. Maybe 4:00, I could push you to get, I could push you to get out there at 4:25, yeah, I mean, I do that probably, I didn't document it, but...
We have a home field, and we have...
So I have to bust down, so in the days they play those games, I get, I, I mean, I probably do, we probably get out there at 4:25. But you, all right, in the days, your days, could you, could you handle coaching a football team like I have to and put them on there without, without being practiced?
Well, we always have about 125 kids every, every year.
But, but, and did you, do you always have less, did you ever have less than 120 minutes to practice?
We, we never, we never did get away from the field before 7:00.
Right. And it's, and it's almost 7:00 before we get close to it.
We never got on the field till, basically, around 5:00 with, with chalk, chalked off and filmed.
Sure.
And, and we won games doing that. Kids, kids...
And I know, I hear that all the time, "Oh, you get to play on turf." We'd win if we played on gravel. That turf doesn't mean anything to me, doesn't mean anything to my kids when, when I'm away...
Doesn't mean anything to my kids when I'm away from, I got a longer day than anybody's got.
Yeah, do you have to allow them off the field?
It's gotten worse. Tremendously worse. I just told you. Yeah, I've had to do that before.
How does it feel?
That takes, you know, it doesn't take very much time. I wouldn't, you know, has it gotten worse? Yeah, you know, yeah, you did help us about six years ago.
Well, I mean, I tried and now like I don't know.
You did.
I don't know, Dr. Durrin did too, but I don't understand what's happening now.
Yeah, it's gotten worse.
That's my point. So are they staying on the field longer or?
Doug, am I wrong? If, I mean, since I've been there, nine years I've been there, if the practice time is 4:30, he will usually quit at 4:30. But then every day, and I'm talking nine years since I've been there, that means they go out and talk, then he'll talk to his team for 12, 15 minutes. He has this much.
Doesn't move them off the field?
Not one time. No, not one time. So it's always, so a 4:45 practice time will mean 5:00 for us.
So maybe Dr. Durrin and?
4:30 is perfect.
With their athletic director and everybody here.
And I've been through, I've been through a meeting like that every year.
So we do have one more delegation. Mr. Woods?
Yes. Let Mr. Bruce King talk for me. Can I yield my time a little, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I do feel like if we have a contract with them and they're supposed to be off at a certain time, they just need to be off. I mean, like, teachers have to be in a classroom sort of, not everybody has to follow the rules to make a word.
Let Mr. King speak for five minutes.
I agree with him. We'll, we'll discuss. But while we take one minute. Currently, Dr. Durrin is allowing UC to be in breach of the lease.
Dr. Durrin, you speak on this?
Dr. Durrin is allowing UC to be in breach of the lease continually.
Well, he's now becoming aware of it.
Well, no, no, wait a minute, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. This way. When we met with UC, they wanted to ask if we could have 15 minutes or more, if we could work that out. UC agreed. I said, "I don't know, we'll call." Mr. Bailey agreed. He said, "Mr. Carpenter agreed." Everybody agreed. That's why we did it.
And when did this happen?
This was, this was in, I don't even remember.
Can I answer that question? I mean, I was told, Mr. Bailey called in and said, "Hey, it looks like 5:00." And I told him, I said, "That's crazy. Mr. Bailey, I need to go home. I'm going to be divorced. I got kids. You want your kids there?" Mr. Bailey said, "I'll go fight for a little bit. You know, I'll go fight what I can." He comes back and he tells me, "John, it's going to be 4:45." He said, "It's the best we can do. Is that okay?" And I said, "It has to be. I don't have anybody to fight for us." It was never, it was never anything that I agreed to and I was tipping to death with. It was something I was forced to.
Did you have, when we were up in the office, you said, Mr. Carpenter, that you didn't mind the 15 minutes. You said that right in my office.
I said what?
In my office, you said you really didn't mind the 15 minutes.
I did.
Yes, you did, sir.
And you said you would have them abide by the contract?
We did, and I was in Louisiana at a conference, and when there was a confusion over it, I said, "Go back to 4:30 until we can get home and figure this out." And we met again, and then I talked with Mr. Bailey and asked again, did everybody agree? That was not underhanded, as you're indicating or want to insinuate. It was not underhand, and everybody said they agree. And I said, "Well, then we'll just go back with it. That's what everybody agrees on." It's not underhanded, as you might indicate.
We had a meeting and?
I can't hear Mr. Bailey.
I'm sorry, I'll just really come up.
The bottom line is the board wants UC to go back, tell us to take them back and we'll take the time to go off at 4:30. I'm fine with that.
It's a lot easier for a college team to change their schedule. It's a lot easier for a college team to change their schedule than it is for a high school team.
To the best of my recollection, over the, how the 4:30 ended up 4:45, we're at a meeting, I think it was Doug and maybe Mr. Mullen was there and Dr. Durrin was there, and we knew, it was presented with us 5:00. And we said, we stopped, we said, "Well, we want 4:30. We want 4:30." And then, you know, a few days later, Dr. Durrin calls back and we discussed the time a little bit because UC is kind of walking in one of this 5:00 thing. And I think a proposal was thrown out, and I had talked to Coach Carpenter, and he knew they were wanting 5:00. Then a proposal was thrown out, and I think it was a couple of days of 5:00 and a couple of days at 4:30. And I said, "That sounds awfully confusing." And then we, I said, "Well, instead of going 5:00 on some days, 4:30 on some days, let's meet in the middle, go at 4:45." I talked to John, I called John on the phone, and he said, "Well, 4:45 is..." And he said, "We don't, you know, it is what it is. We kind of went with 4:45." No one was wanting, no one was wanting to go to 4:45. No one wanted to push it back. But we felt like it was a compromise to kind of be in the middle. So it wasn't like we wanted to push anything back 15 months.
Okay, you're in charge of Capital High. What do you think's the best to do, to do with UC?
Well, I think what's, what the board needs to decide, if you all wanted to go back, just tell us and we'll do it.
I mean, if you ask me what?
No, I mean to go back to 4:30. Go back to 4:30.
Yeah, the question is whether we? I mean, I'd love to have it available at 4:15, but 4:30 would be great. We want our kids to be, what we want is, we want our kids, we want our kids to be able to get out of school, get on the bus, go down there, get on the field, get home, and have a little bit of a life after football. So that's what we would like. We don't want our kids out until 8:00 at night and coming home, you know, that's a really long school day.
Yes.
So that's what we want. Mr. King, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm sorry, a couple other things.
Okay. Well, since he didn't really get enough time, we'll let him go a little longer.
Enough, he's on his second or third round.
30 years is waiting.
I'm not sure who it was that allocates the money to lately.
This is Wes. Yes, sir.
Maybe he does provide some, 200,000 is left after the salaries for operations and improvements.
The entire 200,000, and again, the amount differs slightly. Some years it's been a little more than 200, but Mr. Carter works with us to determine what is allocated for salaries and then whatever's left you can allocate to utilities. So it depends year to year.
Right.
But that, the entire amount is available to them. It doesn't cover, and Mr. Carter might know how much is covered. I can't see where Mr. Carter is, but.
I mean, a couple of years ago, the 200,000, $350,000.
And, sir, I don't remember the amount on that.
And then we also, just, there's a new scoreboard that just went in, and that was what, 200 and what?
250, sir.
250.
Are there sponsors that are repaying for that scoreboard? You have sponsors that are paying year by year?
There's sponsors that pay on that, yes. That's my forthcoming right away.
Well, yeah, over a period of time. Right, over a period of time, I'm sure you recoup your money on that. Doug, you have a ballpark number on the?
No, sir, not at the time. I'm not too confident.
Okay. There's one other thing in this lease that I'd like to bring up, and that is when UC has football games, it says in the lease that Capital High or any other team that is practicing that day should be off the field no later than one hour prior to kickoff of UC's game. And it's my understanding that this year and the other years, it's been 7:30 kickoff for UC's games, but Capital or Horseman have been forced off the field at 5:30.
5:00.
5:00. Okay, so two and a half hours prior to kickoff, they're asked to leave.
What's the reason on that? Is that something that was discussed?
Not that stuff. Doug?
NCAA rules changed the time last year that a team has to be, come on the field and practice an hour and 15 minutes before a game.
Look, high schools, I mean, how's that apply to high schools?
Well, that's when, that's when the other.
When UC plays.
So you're saying that they changed the rules so that UC can't practice an hour?
No, no, visiting team and a home team needs to, is allowed on the field an hour and 15 minutes before a game.
Okay.
So Phil, it's a 7:30 game, the field has to be available 6:15.
6:15, yeah.
6:15, not 5:00.
Again, also.
The field has to be at 6:15.
The games were also changed from 7:30 to 7:00.
You said a game's changed from 7:30 to 7?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it'd be 5:45, but they're getting kicked off at 5:00?
They're getting off, they're being asked to get off by 5:15.
So it's still 30 minutes beforehand.
I'm sorry, they're being asked to vacate the field an hour and 45 minutes and seven hours 15 minutes?
Hour and 15 minutes, sir.
No, I understand that that's NCAA rules, but you, I'm sorry, did you say 5:15 they're getting off the field?
Yeah, that's what he said, 5:15.
But 5:45, because a 7:00 game is when they're supposed to vacate the field.
5:45, I'm sorry, sir.
No, no, you're fine. I just want to make sure.
It's supposed to be 5:45, but they're being asked to be removed by 5:15. Is that correct?
Okay, so.
5:00, but we were asked to get off this year.
You were asked to be off, I'm sorry, I'm not going to like this, but you were, you were asked to be off the field at 5:00, but NCAA rules, 5:45 is when they're supposed to vacate the field.
Whatever, they give the agreement, introduce me in writing.
Yes. Okay. Continue, Mr. King, if you can continue. I think the board would like to discuss, if you could.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Last thing I just want to bring up is, what do we meant, you agreed to allow Capital next year to receive 100% of their concessions? I know they appreciate that. I'd like to bring up, Horseman and Stonewall currently receive no portion of their concession revenue. They're also required to pay the additional dollar per ticket, and I know that Horseman pays a rent check for each home game. I don't know the amount, but they do pay a rent check.
Mr. Carter, how much is that rent check?
That, sir, is $300, sir. And what happens with it is? And we, we have expenses that we pay up to.
I can hardly hear you, I'm sorry.
Maybe it's $300.
He said 300 per game.
Each middle school pays that?
Middle schools pay that. I don't know for a fact about Stonewall. I would assume they did.
All middle schools?
Can you give them the mic, Doug? I'm sorry.
All middle schools at present time pay $300 in expenses.
For security and, yeah.
From a concession, whatever they make in concessions, they pay 300 of that?
Yeah.
They, they, they pay no concessions.
Okay.
They pay rent.
Per game.
Per game.
And where does concession money go?
It goes to my expense after, for utilities and expenses that I do to keep letting it go.
Mr. Carter, we, there's Canol County schools pay the electric bill over, do you have to pay the money, pay the electric bill?
At the present time, sir, I pay the utilities.
But that's allocated from the 200,000?
No.
We allocate 200,000 from the board for, for Lately Field. That can be used for salaries. Any monies left after salaries can be allocated for utilities. And my experience is that part of the money that we allocate goes for utilities. However, Mr. Carter pays the remaining utilities from the Lately Field General Fund, which is, it's akin to a school's school checking account. And when Mr. Carter is explaining that that's where the concession money goes and that's where the rent money goes, that's going into the Lately Field General Fund, which is a checking account that Mr. Carter is the signatory authority on.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Bruce? Do you have anything else for Doug?
And all county schools still offer, it has to do with Horseman, Stonewall, and all of our other schools, a senior citizen pass?
Yeah, we still do.
And do the parent, they're all pretty well-known, aren't they?
I think she has not. This.
Okay, I didn't know who was talking.
Does the dollar surcharge, well?
That is correct, sir. The dollar.
The dollar surcharge is added to the ticket. For example, if a school pays $5 at their school for a ticket, you come to me at $6 that day. The dollar surcharge goes to upkeep of the stadium.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Carter, please? Is there any other school where the county pays rent to play at their own field?
Mr. Carter, would you ask?
I would have no idea, sir. I run Lately Field.
And Pedro.
Can anybody on the board answer that?
I, you know, they, no, they don't. But they have to maintain the field, the equipment, they have to buy their own scoreboards, their own lighting, everything they do, they have to buy all that themselves. We don't do that.
But they don't have to pay for their own utilities?
No.
Do they pay their own utilities at the other schools?
No, county pays all utilities.
But not at Lately Field.
Not at Lately Field.
No, that's what.
Maybe it's put on the backs of the students.
We pay part of it, and then part of it comes through the surcharge or whatever else.
And the rent and the concessions. And I brought up last time I was here, that over the past six years, the concessions at Capital football games have brought in about $200,000, of which Capital has received $50,000. The board has taken $150,000.
But that's, in the future, that's taken care of because Capital's getting.
Right, right. Starting next year, it's different. But I'm just curious if you have an accounting of that money going back to when Capital opened?
I don't, I can't answer that question. I know it will have an accounting for some years. We're not required to keep records for more than seven years. We can certainly check. I would guess that we can get more than seven years because we don't leave us that long. I don't know if we can go all the way back to the other end.
In clarification, the 150,000 you're talking about goes back to Lately Field, not to Canol County Schools, correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Into the fund you were discussing.
Right.
Is that correct, Doug?
I was.
The concession revenue that was split prior to next year, did the 75% go back into Lately Field?
Well, there's not 75%. I don't know where everybody did, but.
But it is the 75%. I've got a spreadsheet that says it. Has that money been put back in?
Half of it goes back to our product and we stop.
That's not profit.
Right, 50% goes to cost of goods sold.
50% of the profit, you ask the half of.
So you're buying a hot dog for a dollar and selling it for two.
This was taken from, this was taken from Canol County Schools, from what the band got.
It's all there at Canal... I mean, at Capitol High School, you can see it. The band has received forty-eight thousand dollars, which is twenty-five percent of the profit, right?
No, it was fifty percent of the profit, because the other...
No, if you read on the contract, it says twenty-five percent.
Of the revenues.
Of the revenue. I mean, it's...
Twenty dollars of the revenue, but it's fifty percent.
I mean, twenty-five percent of the profit.
Okay. This always seems like it's moved.
It's not moved, because over thirty years, I'm just curious how much money has been given to somebody else rather than Capitol.
Okay.
And the fact that they don't have any athletic facilities, and Horseman, Stonewall don't have any athletic facilities.
Okay. Well, are you...
I'm done.
Okay. So, the board... The reason why I asked to put this on the agenda is to talk about the issue with the